Hello. Hey, how's it going?
Welcome. Hello.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Matt Lawless and I'm the Scottsville Town Manager. You're now viewing the Scottsville Planning Commission meeting for April 5th, 2021. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Town of Scottsville's ordinance on the continuity of government during the COVID-19 emergency. The public officials who are electronically present in this meeting are the Scottsville Planning Commission members Lindsey Brown, Vice Chair and Town Council Liaison, Josh Peck, Chair, Lisa Calabiano, Sheri Lambert, and Shannon Strasner. The town staff members are also present for this meeting. The public has several opportunities to observe and participate in the town's business. These are listed at the entrance to the town office and on the town website. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on the relevant matters. If you're viewing this meeting in the future, thank you very much for joining on the town's YouTube channel, and we're settled in all of our quorum and staff here. We'll kick off the meeting in just a moment. Thank you very much. Hello, sir. Hello, good to see you, everyone. We're getting everything set up here, and I'll send everybody out one more time and then we'll kick off. Welcome to hybrid meeting format, everyone.
We're still expecting comments?
Yes.
Okay, well, we have a full commission here. Are you okay to take role?
I certainly can.
Okay. I'll just go ahead and get started. You can join when he's ready. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call for a quorum. Or we'll do the call to order and have a roll call for a quorum.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Calabiano?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Strasner? All present.
All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes for March 1st, 2021? See, a couple head shakes. Oh, there's Thomas. All right. Okay. If there are no issues that anyone else saw with the minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sorry, I'm all over the place here. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our past last meeting.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, second. Yep.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Any opposed? All right, minutes pass. All right. Ms. Brown, would you, do you have a report for us from Town Council on any relevant actions?
You know, I wish I was a little better organized here. The two weeks off in a row have really done a number for me. I'm trying to find my last notes. And... Let me see. I'm sorry, I'm...
Would you like this to come back to you?
Yes, please.
So, we will move number three, Report on Relevant Actions, down below New Business. So that will become our new seven C, let's say that. So now we will move to number four, Matters from the Public. This is Guest Remarks from Charlottesville Planning Commission, Members Roy... I apologize if I butcher your last name. Roy Stolzenberg and Lyley? Lyley? Stola Yates. Solah Yates. Do we have them present? I don't see...
Mr. Chairman, it looks like they are not online. I resent that link, and I had confirmed with them last week. But if they tune in later, maybe they can catch it at that time.
All right, well, we will temporarily postpone our Matters from the Public, Guest Remarks. So we will move to number five, which is our public hearing on the zoning text amendments for sections of intent definitions and village residential. Matt, can you set that up with a little more detail for our visitors?
Certainly, thank you. These zoning updates follow from the town's comprehensive plan update in 2018 and West Downtown Small Area Plan adopted in 2020. Both of those town long-range plans called to update the town's zoning ordinance, which by and large remains unchanged from 1994 to 1996, when the town boundaries were expanded into parts of Admaral County. The town by and large kept the Admaral County zoning that was in place at that time, and that's what the town's been working with. The long-range plans of the town call for updates to that zoning ordinance to better meet Town Council's goals, and Planning Commission succeeded in a first zoning update to the downtown historic district zone back in 2019. So on agenda for this evening are updates to Chapters 1, 3, and 9 of the Scottsville zoning ordinance. Those are the intent definitions and village residential sections. The Chapter 1 intent statements are pretty technical in nature, matching up statements of intent from the comp plan back into the zoning ordinance. The definition cleanup is fairly routine as well, adding definitions to terms that were referenced elsewhere in the ordinance but not defined, particularly housing types like triplex and quadruplex. Planning Commission spent most of its work in this process with detail on the village residential section. That's the zoning that's in place on about a third of the town's area and spans the difference between rural area at the town's forested edges and the downtown residential in the historic district. The amendments on tap provide for a little more flexibility in those triplex and quadruplex housing types, and mostly update the provisions for cluster development by special use permit. Cluster development remains by special use permit rather than by right, and the revision provides for increased density at a trade-off of greater open space. So an engineer might plan more preserved open space and receive density up to four units per acre within their concentrated cluster development when it can be served by public utilities and when Planning Commission and Town Council feel that granting that permit advances the general goals of the town. Planning Commission has had a couple of months of work session on this matter, and this is the public hearing before making a recommendation.
All right, thank you for setting that up. Would you go ahead and let our two guests in from the waiting room? So at this moment, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing for comment from our... We have three visitors here in person today, and we have plenty of people out in TV land. So I'll go ahead and open the floor. If you'd like to speak through Zoom, you have a raise your hand option, and then we'll go ahead and start with in-person comments.
I'm sorry, am I sure? What are you saying here?
So this is the public hearing section?
I understand that, but do we just start talking or are we supposed to talk?
Yeah, so you can go ahead and, if you have comments based on this one, you can go ahead and start, and then we'll start taking comments from them. So we get everybody...
So should I start?
Go for it.
Okay. Well, I read over this, and the only thing that I've had a concern about...
I'm sorry, can we introduce ourselves?
Sure.
Just for the...
Sure, Brenda Heisen.
Thank you, Brenda.
Okay, the only thing I had a concern about was the town mission or vision statement. It was, I mean, I honestly, there wasn't really anything that I really had a problem with, except for changing citizens to residents. And it gave me pause, and I think it's because of the many years that I've lived here. I have always seen Scottsville as a place of engaged citizenry. And in fact, I know that when I first moved here, I was amazed at what all this little community has to offer. And it has it because of the engaged citizens here in this community. And I mean, even the fact that we're meeting tonight, a town this size is kind of remarkable to me. So anyway, I think the way that I see it is that in our vision statement, you know, we should try to be making a vision statement, and citizens, I think, best exemplifies who we are, and residents is basically just saying that we live here. And anyway, I would like to have the Planning Commission reconsider keeping citizen instead of residence. And I just want to add this quote because I have seen this. I know I saw it in the Scottsville Monthly, and it was in reference to the citizens of Scottsville. And it went like this, I'm sure y'all heard it. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that's happened. So I would like to hope that we can hold that still as part of who we think we are. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add on to that point that it is citizen of the year and not resident of the year. So that is a very good point. Kevin, Bill, would you have anything to add?
All right. I've read the revisions and, you know, like, like everyone on the Planning Commission, you know, we want what's best for the town and, you know, one of the things are we are a small town. We're very unique, and, you know, we've got some really traditional values. We have some really good values of history and the river, the quiet for a community. And I know that there's a push, because I've been, I was on a planning commission for a while, there's been a push often after, have some growth here and some affordability, and I think that's admirable. My concern is the values of the town are not always in line with those of the developer who, you know, the major value for, and it can be, it should be, for a developer is profitability. And it's not always about community. And I've been on the Planning Commission for a number of years, and I had some unpleasant experiences with developers taking advantage of our town, taking shortcuts, cutting corners, and not really concerned about, you know, our harmony in this town. So even a small area plan, we had some concerns about that until we got that started. But so my concern is with the triplexes and quadruplexes, that those, we don't have those in our town right now. And I think that should be studied to see how they would fit into a rural area and how they could be harmoniously put into a town of this size. I can see that, you know, there could be some places for that. But I do think keeping Scottsville harmonious and making things glow and making it, continue to making it beautiful, and not just putting up a bunch of, you know, affordable houses or triplexes and quadruplexes. So the limit that, so that works with our town. So that's my concern, making sure it's harmony, you know, and that's in our plan, make sure it's harmonious development. And so I think we should study that. Because one of the things is we, if we have, I mean, we've got to have some growth, I'm sure, but we don't want to change the character of the town. It's the character of the town. It's such a unique, special town, and we want to keep it that way. And so I think, you know, keeping maybe a lid on that or how many could be here or what they could be. Because I think that's an easy choice for a developer. It's probably cheaper to do a triplex and quadruplex than a duplex or, you know, single-family home. My other point, I guess, or is the cluster development. I really feel like 2,500 square feet is too small for quality of life. And that's in our plan too, before they let, 2,500 square feet is very small. My, I have a smaller lot, and it could probably put three places on my lot with that, 2,500 square feet. And I just think that's too small. I like to see about 5,000 square feet. Because I think, you know, having small places, or maybe even triplex and quadruplex, it's drawing people here, but I feel like that might draw people who are just going to be here temporarily until they could find a better, bigger place to go. And we want permanent residents as much as possible. We want people to stay here and be here for a while, not starter homes and, you know, just to, you know, be here for a while and then move on. So I feel like that is, that is too small. I think that'd be great for the urban area downtown is really good for that. But I think in a rural area, a lot size that small is, would take away the quality of life, I would think. Not to have a backyard or a front yard or, you know, a garden or... People would be probably likely putting up more walls and fences. So I'd like to consider that, to study those two things.
Thank you. Well, if you have, you have...
Well, good. I'm sort of curious to hear what everybody else has to say. But, no, but I'll go again. Kevin Quaid, sort of coming from the real estate side, unique perspective on it from the standpoint I was here and before when we started this. And I've sort of seen some of the larger scale developers try to come in and totally change Scottsville because they potentially could have. And one of the things that I've noticed looking at this is that, and seeing other areas, other smaller areas, this type of zoning type of change would allow us to have, or allow the town of Scottsville to have some new stuff coming in, but not at a scale that would be overbearing. One of the, Paulette, you know, tried to do something years ago, and some of you may or may not have been here, but they claimed a huge number of homes. And when the developer came and talked to me about it, they said, well, we'll just, we'll ask for this, and then we may settle for something less. What I've found is it's better to potentially go with the higher ditch, take some of these smaller lots and do some infill type of development. So it may not be perfect for everybody, should I say, but it's not a huge type of development where you don't have a situation where it could change the way of Scottsville on its own one project. And I don't think that there's that many properties out here that potentially fit this type of... How should I say, to have a huge number of homes that would, that would potentially change the way Scottsville is. And I think it's probably what I'll leave now. I think you guys have done a great job coming up with something. Are there some concerns? Yes, maybe with quadruplex, triplex, yes, maybe, but that's a whole lot further along than having nothing. So, you know, I don't know, maybe I'll put some discussion on some things, but I think you're definitely heading in the right direction, and I'll call you for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll shift our focus on to those coming with us, coming to us from Zoom. If you have, if you'd like to speak, go ahead and... You should have the option to raise a little hand, and we can unmute you and give you your turn. We see it, Justin, go ahead.
Justin Schimpf, I'm speaking here tonight on behalf of Dr. Hurt, one of the landowners of some of these properties. I wanted to share a couple thoughts, since I have a lot of experience in housing projects. And certainly to the comments about the duplexes and quadruplexes, I think you'll actually find you won't get very many of those because the density is actually not that high in the grand scheme of things. I know four units an acre is a big jump up from what has been in Scottsville, but that product is probably more of a 10 to 15 unit an acre sort of product. And you may get a few of them here, there as infill. But as this ordinance is crafted, I think what you'll get primarily is single-family and some attached duplexes, which is nothing, nothing wrong with that. But just to bring everyone's attention that as it's structured, I don't think that'll be the most popular product, the triplexes. And maybe that's okay, that's what's thought of. The other thing that concerns me a little bit, and this is just a matter of perspective and experience on these things, I know it's easier to make something by special use permit because that says, well, we're not really approving it now or giving the option to approve it. But if you want to build housing, that creates then this sort of hoop to jump through for each developer who may come forward. And there's always uncertainty of what can be approved, what can be done. But I think that's for folks who are looking at, you know, small projects, like Scottsville is not going to be massive housing projects. I think that's going to be maybe a barrier to entry that somebody may say, you know what? I just don't want to deal with all this, the public hearing business and traffic studies and things that may come up for this. So I would really, I know it's a big step to make, but if in fact you want to see growth in housing, that's, that's up to you, obviously, not to me. But I think considering that more of a by right option would, and with the codes that require certain things, performance standards, and you've got those in the way of open space and lot sizes, would likely get you that residential housing that you're looking for. Whereas unfortunately, as it is, and I understand it, folks come along and say, well, we want to do 20 units here, 30 units there. And the people around that, maybe you're uncomfortable with that or concerned about it. And if those projects get shot down, then you really haven't accomplished anything with this change if no housing actually gets built. So again, that's a prerogative of yours to take into account. But just as someone who tries to build small housing projects, I just, I see the challenge convincing developers to go for that route with the uncertainty and the cost involved and just kind of getting started. So appreciate your time, let me speak, and I'll stick around if there's any questions specific anyone wants to ask me related to housing, I've done a bunch of it. And I look forward to hearing what you all have to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak to us? Yes, sir, go, go right ahead, while, I'm sorry, we skipped over your introduction, and we're a little late joining you. Feel free to go ahead now.
How do you do? Lyle Solay, it's Charlottesville Planning Commission. Not a, not a resident, I am a citizen. Interesting conversation. We're, we're having a lot of similar conversations in Charlottesville as we, you know, are going through cop plan and getting into, sort of starting to move towards rezoning. Have dug a lot into this, these issues, happy to share what I know. Generally, I would suggest if you want something, make it by right. If you don't want something, then into special permits or banning it outright. A little bit of flexibility goes a long way. That's just, you know, not so much going for the perfect, but going for the, the better. As Commissioner, the head planning commissioner in Charlottesville, Hosea, often says, Hosea Mitchell, don't let the, the perfect be the enemy of the good. Just if you can get to something better, I think you'll be happy with it.
You know, and I guess I will just chime in here a little bit to Bill's comments specifically. You know, Bill, when we, when we were talking about these changes, especially the, the gross density for the cluster development and changing it to four development units per acre. And Matt, please let me know if I'm misquoting you here, but I believe that is essentially what we have in the village residential at the moment. So it won't seem as such a, you know, home upon home type of development in allowing this new density in that area. Is that, am I saying this correctly, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, of course, that's something that, that we are taking to heart. And, you know, I like, I like the statement of, you know, maybe, maybe perfection is not something that we can strive for, although I can understand wanting to be perfect. But I think we can all agree that we want to see, not mass development in Scottsville, but we want to see a better environment for our citizens and our residents and the businesses that are here right now to flourish in the years to come. You know, so, so doing careful development that of course, when we, if we start working with a developer, that, you know, this is not just a change and then development gone wild from here. But it's, you know, it's a process, of course, that we will, we will be working together with to strive for the best thing that we can bring to Scottsville.
Thank you, Lindsey. Yes, right now, I'm going to do our last round of check for if we have any more public comment. Otherwise, we'll move ahead to our planning commission. Well, actually, I would like to go ahead and get our guest remarks. If we don't have any more public comments. Going once for public comment, the last bit for a public hearing.
Okay. Can I ask one question? Is Justin still, I guess, if Justin was still there. When he, when he talked about the sign right versus the special use permit, could, could he expand on the difference? Or what the difference is from the developer's standpoint, being by right versus special use permit, maybe a little bit more if you've all agree that with the special use permit situation? Okay.
Do you want me to opine on that, or is Matt going to? I had a trouble hearing him.
So the difference when it comes to by right and special use is by right, you wouldn't need to come before planning commission to get... to get special acceptance of a certain thing. Well, a good example was recently the gas station applied for a drive through window. Now they were able to do the whole gas station by themselves by right, because that's what the property is known for. But the special use permit kicks in when you have certain things that aren't by right. So having a quadra flex as a special use permit, if that's something they were looking for, they would need to come and ask for it and then have it approved. By right means they could go ahead and skip that step moving forward. So for a developer, anything done by right would be a step from having to come to council or planning commission, get approval and then have it go to council. So a speed up of probably three months for any of you. So that felt right, Mr. Schimpf?
Yes, that's right. And process wise, I just, I think what I, what I have seen very much in my career, and I understand why it happens, but that when you make housing special use permit, we tend to sort of treat like people and new neighbors as adverse impacts. And I think that's a dangerous road. You know, we want to like, you have to, within, you know, reason, you have to control your development, but unfortunately, a lot of people have been kept out of the housing market and into unaffordable housing because we don't build enough housing. Because as every little project comes forward, it's always a fight, the time and money that we've spent in Charlottesville on six unit building, 10 unit building, little projects that go nowhere. It's just, it's very discouraging to developers. And I know it's a big leap to come out and say, yeah, we'll trust developers and trust the market to sort of create the housing. But if you actually want the housing, that's really the step you have to take. And again, that's you all's prerogative, but I'm fearful that if I have to do a special use permit, even a small project, there'll be people who have concerns and I understand those, but those concerns tend to shut down projects and then it's 10, 20, 30, 50 families without the housing they want and need. And that to me is a big detriment. So that's why I advocate, to the extent you can feel comfortable making some higher density by right to see it actually happen. Otherwise, I'm afraid that you just won't, you won't see much of it.
And Mr. Quick, to your question, that last bit is the key. It's the higher density in the proposed changes that's by special use permit. The cluster ordinance proposals are all allowable by special use permit, but there's a base level of development that's allowable by right, just at a much lower density.
To get the higher density, the concern is for the developer that they're not going to want to play the game because of the potential that it may not be approved.
Do we have any more questions before we move on? Concerns, comments? All right. So because we're still expecting Lori, right?
She had a family emergency come up and sensitive for vets. If it's, if the Q and A with our neighbors is helpful, we can try that again in the future. But it might help too to see what some of our county planning commission is up to as well. We certainly have some time for discussions with the authorities about having in Charlottesville compared to you.
Okay. Commissioners, how would you like to move forward? Would you like to go ahead and discuss, have discussion and vote on our zoning tax amendments? Or would you like to have a small break and speak to Mr. Sola Yates? Yep, okay. What would you like to do?
Um, for Mr. Sola Yates's perspective, maybe we should let him speak so that he can go about the rest of his evening.
All right. So, you know, we had a small introduction, but would you mind introducing yourself for us?
Not a bit. Planning Commissioner Vice Chair Charlottesville, Planning Commission Vice Chair Housing Advisory Committee. They're separate dueling committees. I try to keep them somewhat aligned. I've been doing a lot of work on the affordable housing strategy, the comprehensive plan and getting ready for the big zoning, where we're doing all of our zoning the first time since 2003. We're due, we're due. In my spare time, I researched the history of zoning and housing policy, because, you know, continuity. And I do computers and have a family in Charlottesville.
All right. Thank you. What was it that got you into the planning commission work in the first place?
So the, I got addressed because we were starting this comprehensive plan back in 2017. It's the same process. We've been doing this for four years. And we were, it was becoming very clear that the housing crisis was getting worse in Charlottesville. And this map was released that to me certainly looked like fewer homes would be allowed in the city. That was a great downzoning was planned to really crack down on new homes in the city just as the prices were getting completely crazy. And I had recently, well, recently, a few years before purchased a home and it was hard for me. I was outbid on cash like three times, I think. And that was in, you know, the good old days. Everything's harder now. So I sort of imagined like, oh wow, if it was that bad for me, what must it be like for people now? And if things get even worse, you know, even fewer homes are allowed, that's a nightmare. So I talked to my city council rap and they said, go fix it. I said, I'll try.
So, well, obviously Charlottesville is a whole other beast and I mean, we think we have difficult time making decisions down here in Scottsville. But really, the general idea is the same. So what are you finding the most difficult things to deal with right now? And what's a recent issue that you guys have been able to come to an agreement on and move forward in the Charlottesville market?
The current conversation, we're into our comprehensive plan, future land use map, which is really, you know, big picture, big ideas, you know, how many, how much height do we want to allow? What's the smallest kind of building we want, we want to allow? Generally where? You know, is industrial a part of the future of Charlottesville? How do we start to allow, you know, missing middle homes that we banned for 60 years now? How do we, how do we, you know, start to allow that in? Is it going to be, you know, a crazy flood? Is it going to displace people? Is it going to change the character of the community? I heard that term earlier. It's a concern. In Charlottesville, we've got a whole bunch of historic districts and historic protections laid out. We've got, you know, design review. We've got corridor review. We've got review, review. And I don't think you're quite at that level, which there's some advantages to that, believe me. You can have too much design review. But having, you know, some balance so that the most essential, you know, pieces can be preserved, but I think is crucial. And that's very much part of our conversation. I suspect that's important to you as well. The it's helpful to think in places. It's helpful to think in ideas and pictures, which is what we're trying to do. It's helpful to just understand what you've got. One thing we were really surprised in Charlottesville, you know, there was sort of a perception that we had a lot of, you know, single family residential neighborhoods all throughout the city. And then a couple, you know, districts that had a little bit more, some more homes. But actually it's not true. Charlottesville, old, like Scottsville, old, older types, more diverse housing types have been here for centuries. I'm certain that that's true for Scottsville as well.
That's the level of complexity I hadn't thought about. You guys are talking about building up. We're still thinking about how far out to build.
It's coming.
That's a good point about how we fit together. So while, this is Matt while I was speaking, just behind the camera. How, how do you feel like we are connected? You know, we're, we're your very small incorporated neighbor, 20 miles to the south. How does what you do affect us?
Well, one thing I personally am trying to do is get a more reliable transit between the two. So that would, that would be a pretty direct connection and I think a good one. Many people live in the Scottsville area, work in Charlottesville and drive every day, which sounds tough to me. The, just because Charlottesville's housing crisis has splashed out, you know, you know, out to Scottsville and then well beyond to surrounding counties. Sorry, we're working on it. The, beyond that, you know, we have a lot of sort of similar restrictions from the state, what we're allowed to do. There's a lot of common ground there. You know, activists have set a lot of very exciting ideas that are illegal. So in some ways it's helpful to just stay within like, okay, this is what we're allowed to do. It can be constructive. The, one thing we've we've sort of benefited from in Charlottesville is a sort of a culture of giving. There's a lot of people who've been very generous in helping to develop housing efforts. I don't know if Scottsville has tapped into that, but there, there was opportunity there, I would think.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure. So Charlottesville. Oh, we got that big day. Bless them. The, so this people on Housing Alliance, there's the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust. We've got, oh, Thomas Jefferson, something, Housing Alliance, no, I'm sorry, T-Jack, their initials are T-Jack, who do act on homelessness. Really, I'm insulting people and I don't mean to, Habitat for Humanity. That, you know, all these sort of different nonprofits who have done pretty incredible things. And understand how to do that, like planning commissioners don't, which is wonderful.
Right.
I'm kind of wondering how you approach as a planning commission, how you approach gentrification in the older neighborhoods. And we in Scottsville have a number of homes that either are just not in use right now. Maybe we can't find the owners, you know, different scenarios and they're vacant or just dormant right now. And how do you encourage as a community that just taking ownership of what's already there instead of maybe bringing in the new development and really maximizing what's already on the ground, if you will?
Singing my song.
Sherry stole my question.
Ah, sorry.
It's a great question.
Getting the vacant areas of your community filled. And I think maybe one of the ways that I heard you guys talking about earlier was the buy right, changing, changing things to buy right versus the special use permits needed for everything. But any more thoughts on that would be great.
I appreciate this because this is one of the few areas where I've really got a good news story. This is something that Charlottesville has been really successful at. So, you know, during the bad old days, eighties, nineties, Charlottesville had very similar issues, kind of emptied out a little bit, got a lot of empty buildings. Was very good for rent, but led to a lot of unsafe situations and crime issues and stuff, just stuff just falling apart. So part of it is getting the city engaged. It is possible to, you know, enforce ordinance to actually spend, you know, spend government money and buy up properties and sort of move them along. That's, that's legal. That's something that we can do. The nonprofit community can be a partner for, you know, you know, taking, starting with a property that's, that's needs work and moving into something that actually serves the community. And historic rehabilitation tax credits, Virginia is better at this, I think, than anybody else in the country. There are pools of money available to fix up those, you know, those neat old buildings and get them into use for people. And yes, actually allowing them to be used is a huge deal. We went through sort of rounds of downzoning in the 20s, 60s, again in the 90s, that just made it impossible to use all these beautiful historic buildings we had. You could look at them, nobody could do anything with them. So making what is legal to use is a big one. Parking is, you know, a big offender there. What, you know, what, once a building has gone empty for a little while, it no longer enjoys exemption from all these wonderful restrictions that I believe are well intended, but just don't take care of those older buildings. Oh, I think Preservation Piedmont is a good resource on this, that they have a lot of capacity and knowledge. And Jeff Werner with the City of Charlottesville is a good resource as well. That's, that's his, his job. So he can give you a lot of good ideas.
Right. I'm wondering specifically if I could ask just on that same topic, as a community that of course is sizably larger than Scottsville, do you actually as a planning commission target a certain section of the city to go after and encourage gentrification? Like for instance, you you look at Belmont and you say, okay, we really need to deal with that up to the woolen mill. Let's go after the owners. Or what is your, what is your strategy when you target a certain area of the city?
Yes, absolutely. So it has, it must be strategic. So back in the day, it was downtown, you know, downtown Charlottesville was pretty quiet and a lot of resources were put in, you know, from, from the nonprofit community, from the business community, from government to bring it to life, to, you know, get people back there. And downtown Belmont, another, another great example. It was just, it had emptied out. There wasn't, you know, there wasn't really anything going on. So, you know, private industry bringing, bringing restaurants in, bringing shops in. And then government spending the money to, you know, fix up the streets, fix up the lights, make it a welcoming place to be. You know, now downtown in Belmont are, you know, the cool places to be in Charlottesville. That's the highest demand when it was completely reversed. The incredible success stories, trying does, does make a big difference. Now we're in sort of privilege problems where there's, there's still yet more demand. And then we're having difficulty with that because we do have some, we have we do have diversity certainly between neighborhoods, but also a lot of separation between different kinds of people for historical reasons. And being sensitive to that is challenging. Where to focus change, where it will do the most good and do the least harm. And we're actively working on that. Spending money is going to be a part of that, to actively spend to prevent gentrification and give people a chance to stay in the communities they value. Very often these are treated as two separate projects and that just can't work.
Good point.
What about efforts to keep housing affordable for those who really need it?
Yeah, it costs money. It's really hard. We've tried many, many things to do that. You know, the cheapest housing is the housing that you're in. So it sounds, you know, obvious, but it's really true. So your small buckets of money to help people stay where they are. So one of my hats I sit on the, am I going to get it? The Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, I think that's it. Spitting out little bits of money, the city council has allocated. And we, you know, we sit around and try and figure out, okay, how do we best spend this money to help people stay here, to help people hold on? So one huge one actually is just rehabilitation of existing structures. And that can be to preserve homeownership and that could be for, to maintain affordable rentals. There, you know, they have, you have to have agreements that people won't just immediately sell the place or you know, flip it and raise the rent, which is gets you into the legalese of actually doing that and enforcing it. It's all work. It's all hard, but worthwhile and effective.
Would you say that's the best, the best source for refunds or refunds for funding to put it into the city and get a return on that investment by working on rehabilitating older buildings? Or is there something else that really makes sense if, if you have a specific portion of a budget to say, okay, we have this, we can use this for some sort of, you know, something to something to, to increase the value of our community, um, but it needs to end up paying for itself in the long run. Where do you use those dollars?
It's a hard one. So part of it is just, um, so for the, the CAF, uh, the, the housing, housing fund. Um, we have a, a, a certain amount of money that we've got, uh, and we ask for proposals. And we, we, we've got, you know, a little checklist that applicants go through saying like, okay, it's gonna cost this much and it will produce, you know, this many homes or preserve this many homes. Um, and then we can just compare them. Um, and that process has been fruitful. Um, it means that a lot of, you know, kind of nutty stuff gets tossed out the door, which is kind of okay. Um, the, the two big ones that have jumped out for us um, has been uh, Preservation, uh, Almaral Housing Improvement. There's a P there, AIP. Program, let's go with program. Uh, has been really uh, competitive, impressive, and I believe they do operate in Scottville. Um, the uh, other big one uh, has been to go after um, low income housing tax credits. Uh, which are big buckets of federal money, um, that are, they come with all kinds of restrictions and timelines and it's, it's, it's a beast. It's hard to work with. Um, but if you really optimize and have a, you know, a staff person on it, uh, and money to fund it. Um, you can be competitive. Basically, it's, it's the reverse. It's, it's the community going, community going out and competing for these federal funds. Um, which means A, having, having places where they're allowed. So we're not talking about single, single homes. We're talking about, you know, bigger.
So to clarify in that, you mean that you as a city and as a planning agency will go out and get those federal funds? And then you work to disperse those to people in the community, the Affordable Housing Program?
It's very complicated. Uh, so.
It's a housing tax credit, isn't it? Your.
Correct.
So you have to have a real estate tax in place that you're then crediting back to developers for the work that they're doing?
That, that they can use for federal income taxes and they can resell that. It's very complicated and inefficient.
Yeah.
It's not my favorite, but that's where the money is.
Yeah.
So actually, it's, it's third-party developers, can be for private or for, uh, for-profit or nonprofit, coming to the city for money to help, to ask the, the federal government for the tax credits, which they resell. And then there's a fox and a sheep. It's very, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, but it does work. It can work.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any, uh, any more questions or comments?
I was wondering if uh, I was wondering if Charlottesville ever accesses through VDOT and SmartSpace to enhance uh, walkability in those gentrifying areas. Uh, one of the areas that we really have need of in our community is for walkability and to have just sidewalks put in, which is gonna be a huge expense, but I was wondering if that is something that uh, ends up being profitable to try to reach out to them for those things.
Yeah, absolutely. We've had really good success with smart scale funding. Um, the, you know, they, it's, again, it's gotta be all about them and, and, and their requirements and their timelines. You've, you've really gotta bet, you know, staff has to really bend over to make that work. Um, but yeah, it is, is definitely possible. Uh, they had sort of multimodal restrictions. Um, they don't want you to just tell a sidewalk story. They want you to tell a sidewalk and car and transit, uh, and bicycle story. Um, and be cost, cost competitive. Um, but if you can do that, and often that means matching money, uh, could either locally or for, for nonprofit. That money's there.
Excellent. So what's the timeframe on, what's the lead time on something like that? As far as when you start to initiate with them to actually see some funding happen?
Like a year.
Okay.
Yeah, but all, all, all the way from, from uh, start to finish. Yeah.
Okay. It's, uh, it's something that we have been talking about here in, in the town of Scottsville as well. Um, but it's uh, you know, we've got a budget.
Yeah, oh yeah.
I think one of the issues that, that we have that you might be able to help us with is we, um, we have some really narrow streets. So figuring out what development will do on those narrow streets and do with our parking nearby. And um, and that kind of goes in line with keeping the um, character of the, the community. So when have you dealt with that sort of problem in Charlottesville? What were, what was some of your learnings that we can learn from?
Many, many times. Uh, Charlottesville streets old, many older than cars. The, so there are many challenges with that. Um, sometimes uh, we have small amounts of money uh, locally to just build, you know, build sidewalks ourselves, build, you know, safe crossings ourselves. Um, we have had some success getting state funds for that. The uh, we've also tried, just in speaking a face, we, we, we have had some success extracting some resources from developers through the, the special use permit process. Um, it's uh, unpredictable, um, not necessarily successful, but sometimes, you know, the, again, it's, it's a way of kind of putting together um, uh, funds from multiple sources to, to make a project happen. Um, the, oh, any of the other big ones? One thing we did was the um, Streets That Work Plan, which I, I recommend. It's online. Check it out. Um, which we went through every single street in the city, uh, and, and classified them by um, how big they are. Uh, and sort of the, the, the character, what's there, what's happening. Um, not just from, from an, an engineering perspective, but also from sort of the pedestrian experience and the design. Um, which we then put out into a map and then regulations based on that map. Um, because yeah, different streets work differently and have different capacities and are, are, are experienced differently by people. Um, something that we're trying to push for and we haven't quite gotten there yet, is to actually start to be able to allow and create um, narrow streets that work, uh, that, that, that create that quality pedestrian experience, you know, that we love, but that we, has been illegal for like fifty years. Um, there's a lot of charm to that.
Thank you.
Of course.
Uh, when you say that it's been illegal for the last fifty years, uh, what, what are you referring to? Or could you just talk to that a little bit?
Sure, uh, so um, the state's rules tend to, tend to dominate here, which are about speed. They're about how to get vehicles through quickly and safely. Um, so then you, you, you get into um, you know, sort of different zones of the street of what's allowed. But my favorite zone is the breakaway zone, where uh, every, everything has to be designed so that it could be hit by a truck and, and, and the truck can just keep on going. That's that's good stuff. If you want, yeah, we're all in the breakaways zone, folks. Um, which it makes some sense for state roads. Um, but a community, we actually, we want those vehicles to slow down. We actually want people to be able to be on their own private property without a truck coming through, uh, and breaking things. Um, so that's something that we're, we're, we're struggling to get to. Uh, there's this organization, NACTO, N-A-C-T-O. Um, that's been trying to create uh, new regulations that are less about how to get the trucks uh, through as quickly as possible and more about, you know, how do we, how do we build a, a decent community that people love and feel safe in? Which, that, I'm all about that.
Uh, well, it's a, it's a good point. One of the differences between the town and the city powers. Charlottesville has its own public works department. So if you want to paint a street differently or pave it differently or build a bridge, you can do the budget process and just do that to your own. But in Scottsville, we don't have a public works department, so we need to work closely with VDOT and follow their rules. And if they don't, you know, want to put the blinking reflectors on one of their streets, it's hard to persuade them to do that. Where we do have control is in our parks and trails. So it, it's easier for us to make a difference if we get off of the street and go back to the woods and give you a, a trail at the next point, you know, point B, so we don't have to work with the heavy engineering that goes in the roads or wait for VDOT to upgrade there to change their names.
That's actually been another area we've had really good luck with, um, getting grants on, uh, is, is for trail building. Uh, Chris Gensic with the City Parks, uh, has just been an absolute champion with that, uh, real, really incredible. Um, the sort of, sort of person who, uh, okay, the budget is zero, watch me go.
Do we have any more questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us. If you'd like to stick around, we have, we only have three more things to cross off our agenda, so you're more than welcome to stick around or go have yourself some dinner. I'm sure it's about that time.
I think I might wander off, but thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
All right, planning commissioners, we're gonna go back to six A, uh, which will be the zoning text amendments for sections of intent definitions and village residential. Um, I'm now realizing I don't think I officially closed the public hearing. I don't remember if I did.
I gotcha. You're fine.
Okay, awesome. Um, so planning commissioners, this is the time for you to have discussion amongst each other. Uh, and at the end, we'll call for a vote. Uh, or at one of your recommendations to send to council with approval or uh, recommendation for denial.
I mean, I still feel pretty good about living for, I'm sorry, was I not supposed to just interrupt someone?
Yeah, I got the, okay, you're, oh, we'll get back to it in a second.
Sorry. Um, it's some, you know, you know, we gotta keep this moving. Um, so I was just saying, I, I feel pretty good about these changes, um, especially when I think of the uh, the units per acre being similar to what we already have in Village Residential. Um, you know, the other thing being where we really do continue to work on this process when a developer finally comes into play and that it's not that we're just making these changes in a vacuum that someone can then move forward and run wild in the, in, you know, the town of Scottsville. I think quite the contrary, um, you know, we are still working as a partner making the best, smartest decisions that we can, um, based on these new definitions. Um, and some of them really just being, being housecleaning. So personally, um, I, I am ready to move forward.
This is a point of clarification. I'm wondering in uh, the lists of definitions under, I think it's auto salvage or something, the definition for that. Um, it says that wherever there are two or more cars that are out in the open, non-covered that don't appear to be able to be operational, that's considered an auto salvage a yard or something like that. I, I'm just wondering if in the city limits of Scottsville, if there are homes that appear to be that, have multiple cars in their yard that are not operational? It just made me think, do we have a process of, like, is that legal to do inside the city without a special use permit? Or do you approach them and ask them to move that kind of stuff out of their yard? Or I'm, I'm just wondering as a newbie, just for an education on that.
That's, that's a, that's a good point, Ms. Linder. Um, the definition in here is automobile graveyard and you respaw it. Um, it's a, it's a place where there are exposed to the weather, two inoperable vehicles of any kind. And that kind of use is mostly not allowed in town. So you, you correctly spot that this is a way of using the zoning ordinance for a little bit of nuisance enforcement, um, that if you're doing a, a junkyard, a chop shop, a salvage operation, that that's kind of an industrial activity and you don't want that necessarily in every neighborhood. Um, it's a pretty small threshold, only two inoperable vehicles, and some car collectors have those. Uh, so the, the enforcement would be, uh, you know, you, you have these exposed to the weather. Uh, this is not a permitted use, so you either need to make the vehicles operable and then you just have parking, or make them to where they are not exposed to the weather. You have to put them in a garage. So, you know, what you're seeing here is a tool of zoning enforcement. Um, the number two is pretty small. If you wanted to be doing less zoning enforcement, you could increase that number. Uh, I don't think the town has been to court on the matter of inoperable vehicles in a long time. But it's something that I've pointed out to residents on occasion when I have complaints about how, um, the number of junk cars on a lot works.
Right. Thank you.
Um, can you tell us again, um, because I know we talked about this, how many homes theoretically we could have, worst case scenario, if we went with these changes for cluster development, public water and sewer?
I can show you, I can show you a picture that might be helpful. Um, I was interested in how this might look, um, working with these numbers. Uh, so let me, let me screenshot real quick. On what, um, what does a, what does a four unit parade look like? Um, can you see this screen okay?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So in the, uh, this also gets to the question of what is buy rate versus special use permit. So here's an example of a parcel of land where, um, the owner is cutting off an acre and a half at a time and building and then doing it again. So over a period of time, you could make one subdivision each by right and have each one done. And this is how they would be spread out. Um, one of the changes in our buy right option here is that the duplex up to the quadruplex becomes by right when you only do one amount of time. So this, this might take ten years to build out each of these. When you clustered it, it changes. Um, so this is the same sized piece of land with maximum clustering. Um, and this is the scale on a printout. You have the open space requirement here, one-third of the total area. In this example, it's um, just about big enough, it's big enough for a full-size site. Um, and the development rights on this eight and a half acre parcel is thirty-three. So here you have thirty-three homes spread out over the site. Um, it has to have street access into it. Um, and you see a mix of single houses, duplex, triplex and quadruplex. Um, Mr. Schip was pointing out how it is kind of hard to arrange the triplex and quadruplex on the site. This is a way that I saw that it could be done, but you have to be careful about how the lots and streets are arranged. And this, um, it adds some infrastructure costs, because you have to have the street going through it as well as these private alleys in order to get access to every lot. But here's an example of, you know, some of the lots down to twenty-nine hundred square feet. Others more like five, six, seven thousand. They're not twenty-five hundred square feet each. Everybody's got a little bit of yard, a space for parking, gardening, a little play structure. This shows kind of a high impact scenario of what you could do on eight acres. Um, if you think this is too many houses, then the response would be to decrease the zoning number from four to some number smaller than four. I think this shows a pretty good balanced example, the kind of development that I would generate a positive staff report for to say, this meets all of the spacing requirements, has a generous open space and fits pretty well with what you see in other parts. Does that answer your question about what maximum impact looks like?
Yeah, and so this is eight acres, well, eight and a half acres, thirty-three units.
Yep.
And we have how many acres in Village Residential right now? A hundred and, I meant, a hundred and fifty?
A hundred and fifty, yeah.
Hundred and fifty, okay. Um, so, you know, worst case scenario, that would not look pretty. That would not be good to have. Um, well, let's see, a hundred and fifty.
A total build out, a hundred and fifty times four is six.
Yeah, that would, that would certainly do a number on, on our infrastructure. Um, is there? I mean, I'm comfortable and we, we talked about the spacing and I'm comfortable with that, but I wouldn't like to see that with that many units in, in so many acres. So is there anything further that we can say, like maybe cap, how many houses in, in a six acre area or, you know, cap it at, I don't know, 20 something? That way, anything beyond that becomes by, becomes subject to special use?
Oh, I see. So if, if you have by right for small clusters, but special use permit for large ones?
No, I'm saying like the first, you know, the first number, you know, the first 20 houses that are developed in a six acre area, for example, are by right. But any more houses beyond that can become subject to special use.
Lisa, the, the density that Matt just shared that uses that cluster is only allowable by special use permit.
Oh, that's special use?
Yep.
Sorry, missed that.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, that's the, it's this, it's this right-hand column here that's really key where currently and in proposed, every cluster development requires a special use permit. The only by right is acre and a half, one house. So you, you might get special use permit applications for a cluster on one acre where it's four houses.
Can you go back to the last document you were sharing? So this is the, the cluster by, or I mean, the cluster by special use and then the other page you had there, Matt? That's what the same, same area, same acreage would allow by right?
Okay.
This is about as intensely as you could do it without triggering a special use permit.
Right.
Okay, yeah, that I'm okay with it. I, I don't think it's too much. I really don't. I mean, the worst case scenario that you showed is, is if we granted every special use permit, basically, and that wouldn't happen. And also just to chime in on Mr. Ship's comment about how in the past this had been used to discriminate. And Matt, you'd shared a resource with us earlier. It's a book called The Color of the Law, and I forgot who the author is right now. But I, I learned about that book back in January because my real estate connection shared it with me and it is a very, very interesting book talking about housing discrimination that has been in for, created and enforced by the government. And part of that was small, like tightly packed communities or more development per unit. I'm sorry, more density was forbidden and that was because they were trying to keep people out and make it unaffordable for people. And we, we kind of want to do the opposite. We want to make it affordable for people. We want to have a more vibrant community and have more opportunities for people. We don't want to go overboard, but I think that allowing more density is going to allow us to have more of that diversity, have more people have, but still a nice community that still honors the master plan and our intentions.
Right. And, and Matt, I think you had said this when we first started the conversation, that these changes are to help start the conversation. They're not the final conversation, but they're showing that the town of Scottsville is open to some sort of development to help revitalize the town and provide a need of affordable housing for those that need it. Because we all know Charlottesville is way expensive and not everybody wants to live there, even if they can afford it. You know, and, and that's the one thing I think we all really need to keep in mind here is that this, I'm looking at this at least as though it is the opening of the door to start the conversation and we see where the conversation goes, that it's still something that we can control the outcome on. And like I said earlier, we're just not letting someone come into town and, and go crazy. But to show is that we, we are, are willing to come to the table and have a discussion of some sort.
I have a question though about, to, to Justin's point about the by right versus the sup. Would a developer, if we're trying to encourage controlled growth, would a developer look at this and think, I'm not even gonna waste my time jumping through all of these hoops and, you know, requesting special use permits for these developments? So are we, are we shutting the door before we're, you know, before people are even, what am I trying to say? Are we closing the door before the conversation even starts? Because if you look at that map where, you know, the, the current by right number of houses versus what it could potentially be through special use permit, that's quite a significant difference. So could we come to a, could we, could we make it more, more houses by right versus, you know, requesting, you know, how many, I'm not looking at the, the map right now. Where is it? Sorry. So, so the by right option shows two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 houses versus 33 for the special use permit?
Yeah. The, the number that drives that is the gross density and the minimum lot size. So the, the amount of the bonus is the difference between 0.7 and four or 60,000 and 2500. That's how you get the, the change there. So if you want to reduce that spread, I guess increasing the density and decreasing the lot size here in these conventional versions, those are the levels that you can pull.
Just thinking of one further thing I should add. Lisa, to your earlier question about the maximum impact, it wouldn't actually be 600 houses because not all 150 acres of our village residential is on public sewer and water. And the density of four units per acre is only available where you can hook up to those utilities. So if you're, if you're still on well or septic, the, the cluster development does not really increase in density significantly.
And expanding those water and sewer pipes is pretty expensive. And as you've seen, limits what it's built around town based on my cost.
So, yeah, I'm just wondering if we want to make it a little bit more,
inclusive?
Yeah, like, should we allow more by right?
Right.
Maybe it doesn't have to be 33, you know, houses per, you know, eight acres, but maybe it could be a little more than it currently is. That's, that's all I'm wondering.
Do we, we have 60 days from public hearing to make a recommendation?
You want to sit on this or, or play with some more of the numbers and see where it gets you?
That question, so obviously this floating it to the other planning commissioners, would you like to take this upcoming month to think about that and discuss and either keeping that number the same or increasing it to, we would probably want to research a middle ground number rather than
Right.
off the top of our heads listing a number.
I think the question is, Matt, have you had comments about the conventional development? And is that driving people away or is it really a matter of the cluster on, on the sewage lines that, that really drives the most interest? I mean, you know, I also want to be careful that we're not giving away too much too soon.
The, the conversation that I've heard with builders focuses on area that already has utility service. Nobody's talking about pushing water and sewer lines into 100 acres of forest that doesn't have it. That's, that's far too expensive and, and nobody's arguing for that. So it's, it's within the area that's easy to serve by cluster. What kind of project is a workable cluster? And I think you, you heard some mixed feedback. I think we had gritches from builders for some of that, but concern like Mr. Schip said about, you know, if, if they start the work and take the risk for their special use permit proposal, are they going to get it? And I mean, I mean, the only way you can see that is by case by case, taking that up and trying to help them with expectations and, and bring a good proposal. And I'm happy to do that correctly. On the conventional development, the lot size and the spacing is driven by the expectation of everybody having a well and a drain field. You have to have a little bit larger lot to be able to do that. I don't know what the real minimum lot size to have that work is. So I, I would need some research if you wanted it to be smaller than 0.7 and 60,000 to recommend a number that worked. I see us working more in the small-scale cluster projects by special use permit. And we, we might have to wait and see what that workload is, how busy we are with those proposals. If, if we vote them all down, investors will stop coming. If we approve them all, then you'll get complaints about, you know, rubber stamp commission and a special use permit process that doesn't actually guard it. So I think you, you can anticipate how that, how that's going to be weighted and the kinds of decisions you're gonna have to make. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it seems to me that it really is just a matter of the cluster development that we're talking about and that maybe playing around with the numbers for, for conventional doesn't, is not really what, where the conversation lies. But if everybody else wants to take a look at it, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly happy to, to postpone for another month.
I mean, maybe it's to get to your point, Lindsay, maybe you're correct and that, you know, we can just approve it the way that it is now. But maybe we should take a look at what else we're requiring for special use permits. For instance, the apartments above the B store, you know, making the existing base spaces more usable and requiring less special use permits for existing spaces like the, the tiny home that we just, you know, was just up for, you know, approval for special use permits. So maybe making some of the existing spaces more usable.
Just make, yeah, making the, but really focusing more on the Valley Street corridor as by right and not slowing down the process where we have to, you know, debate everything as far as rentals and whatnot. That I totally agree with.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, like, all of the different, you know, the numbers. And if, if this is an actual issue, it's just, you know, listening to what, what Justin was saying, you know, got me thinking about, yeah, some of our, I think some of these processes are a little onerous and, and might discourage, you know, like the Airbnb that, that we just approved too, like, do we really need to make that a special use permit? I don't know, you know, that kind of thing.
Totally.
All right, cool.
All right, well, then it sounds like I will call for a motion.
Recommendation as presented?
Yes, make a recommendation based on what we currently have. And this motion should be either a approval or a recommendation for denial.
It could just be to table it for future work.
Yeah. Yes, or you can make the recommendation to table.
I make a motion that we move, make a, that we move this to town council for further consideration. Is that worded well?
With recommendation of approval or denial?
Approval based upon the, what we see right now on our spreadsheets.
I have a motion to recommend the changes for approval to town council.
That's beautiful.
Is there a second? No problem. Is there a second?
I second that.
All in fair, I have to need a roll call?
Certainly.
I.
Oh, no, 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 sorry. We'll do this real, we'll do this official. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Miss called to be on?
Yes.
Miss, sorry, Ms. Lambert? And Ms. Strassner?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. The motion carries.
All right. Now move on to seven A, which is special use application for apartments. 137 East Main Street, TWS Properties LLC. Matt can support us?
Certainly. Mr. Smith, are you still with us?
I'm right here.
Thank you very much for your patience, sir, and I appreciate you joining us this evening. I will put your application up on the screen here in just a second. Let me share this up. Would you like to introduce the matter?
Sure, I mean, it's pretty, pretty straightforward on the.
Tell us about your property and what you plan to do.
Say that again?
Tell us about your property and what you're.
Yes. 137, it's the B store, Old Masonic Building. As probably know, the Masons are moving out. There's no plan change for the ground, ground floor. I want Scottsville Supply Company to stay as long as possible. Would like to get a special use permit for the upstairs. It's currently zoned as like meeting hall to put in three single unit apartments. Not much else to it. I mean, there'll be a lot of work needs to be done on the building, but that's just, you know, request change to residential type permitting.
How did you decide on the, you know, three one-bedroom versus some other configuration of apartments?
It seemed to make the most sense, at least downtown, I felt it worked. You could maybe break it into two. But then there, and it would two pretty large apartments, the plumbing gets questionable if you try to do two bedrooms with two bathrooms apiece. It seemed like three bedrooms worked the best. The drawings I've currently were pulled up by an architect and she made them work pretty well. And so, I don't know, that's what she came up with and that's what we're going with for the moment. It would not, it couldn't be more than three. There's no way you could get more than three up there. It's just not enough space. And the layout, well, you can see the shape of the building. It leads itself to various limitations.
I did not measure the square footage. Can you tell them what the size is of that?
It's right at 2,500 square feet.
So three by 800?
Yeah. Yes. With a, yeah, exactly.
I, I, I haven't done the full write-up on the staff report just yet, just on account of time. But this definitely fits in with the, the market study that showed demand for this kind of home. I, I meet folks who are looking for exactly this kind of apartment. It requires a special use permit only because it has always been the Masonic Lodge. The zoning that we have allows for the upper story to move back and forth and be apartments if it has ever been apartments in the past, the grandfathering, you know, non-conforming protection. This building was specially built to be the Masonic Lodge and has always been that. So in this case, changing it to the new use is what triggers the permit. If it had ever been used as residences in the past, this would be an easy conversion permit.
Well, any commissioners, do you have questions, comments?
It's exactly what we need in Scottsville, so.
I agree. Do you really have enough information to call a public hearing for next month?
Yes. Yes.
All right. You have the floor.
I make a motion for a public hearing on the special use permit at 137 East Main Street being converted into three one bedroom apartments.
I second.
That date would be set for May 3rd.
May 3rd?
Yes. Just wanted to have, make sure that it got set in the record.
Thank you very much. And I have Ms. Lambert with the second.
Uh, do you want a voice vote or a roll call?
I think voice is fine on the public hearing call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And four ayes, the none opposed, motion passes. We will have a public hearing is set for May 3rd. Yep. And then that being said, we'll move to seven E, which is transient lodging status review. Uh, Matt can set that up?
Good try, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt.
Thanks for being patient.
Thank you, guys. I, I appreciate it. No problem. Have a good one.
Hope the bigger picture views informed you. Well, uh, as, as you know, we've had several applications before us in recent months for tourist lodgings. And I think you raised the question of how many we have in town and whether we've appropriately permitted every one that we do have. The, the zoning treatment around transient lodgings only goes back to 2019. There were a couple of them that were in operation before that time. I remember I, when I came to interview in town, I stayed in an Airbnb, which wasn't permitted. And the, the basic framework on zoning is it's, um, it's, it's restricted, mother may I kind of property rights. If it doesn't say in the zoning that you can do it, then it is illegal. When I do the, the use and answering the question from a property owner, can I do this on my property? I look at the zoning ordinance and if it doesn't say that you can do it, then you can't do it. So when I, when I visited here for the first time, I was, I was participating in illegal use. Uh, so you have the question now of, um, how does the, how does the prior non-conforming use work? And how do you square those up and make sure that they're all properly permitted, licensed and taxed? So one of the first ways that we can kind of look at this is just with business licenses and tax. Um, does every Airbnb have, have that business license and pay the taxes? Mr. Answorth, can I, can I put you a little bit on the spot with that?
Of course.
We were looking at business license lists recently. Do you happen to know how many business licenses we have on that use?
Um, it, a few of them are all under the same uh, person, but we have one, two, three, four. Uh, I believe we have five. I don't have the list right in front of me, so I'm sorry. You have put me on the spot, but I believe we have five permitted. Airbnb is already operational and then a couple others that we've done recently here.
Right. And there are more than that on Airbnb.
Well, listed in the area, but not all of them are actually in town. When you put in town of Scottsville, you get a dozen or so uh, that come up, but several of them outside of town limits.
That's true. So what, so the first check is, you know, are they all appropriately regulated business stuff? And then the other is, did they all get the required zoning treatment? So there's a, there's a section of zoning ordinance that covers non-conforming uses. Um, when, when a thing doesn't match the, um, the, the, the zone that's in place. And that always happens when a community is old. Uh, everything that exists in town predates your ordinance and it's either, it either matches what you made at the time or it doesn't. So we have a section of our ordinance that relates specifically to that. It's chapter six, non-conformities. And the general treatment of it is, uh, the use can continue when it was, um, the, the existing use gets to continue once you change the ordinance. Somebody's action does it become legal when, when you make that ordinance? Uh, but when you, when you sell it, it triggers, it triggers the non-avoidant. And if you stop doing it, in our case, for a period of two years, then it also becomes illegal. So, talking myself in circles.
In, in the case of a couple of our recent bed and breakfasts that have sold, they have operated under grandfather clause. If they were both now to be out of operation as a transient lodging for a period of two years, they would have to reapply under special use in the, you know, zoning that they're in, in order to resume the use.
Exactly. So perhaps the new that they bought a property that had previously been on record is, uh, right, they, they get, one, once they, once they change ownership, they have to reapply. Or if the existing user stopped for new opportunities, then they have to apply. So all of those things put together, we have some non-conformities and we have to keep an eye on it where if somebody had been using it as an Airbnb and then they sell it, the new owner doesn't get to keep doing that. We also have to watch if it gets frozen because tourism is down and that goes on for two years, then it goes away. And we have to do zoning enforcement once it's stopped. So all that to say, I don't think we have an enforcement problem on these now, but we have outreach to do with new property owners, with our existing businesses to make sure they're taxed appropriately and with our realtors that just because you were doing something on a property in the past, doesn't mean the new buyer can do it once it sells.
One of the, the tricky things here is that Airbnb has a layer of security for their uh, participants who are renting out spaces where they don't release the address of the location until you've made the reservation. So you can search as Matt did there for the town of Scottsville and it'll bring up everything within a, a, you know, radius, but it won't actually tell us where these things are. So there's a cottage industry then that has sprung up of analyzing publicly available, uh, like Google street views of places and comparing it with photos on uh, Airbnb to try to figure out where these places are. So that, you know, you can, as a government, subscribe to this contractor service and they'll tell you if you have unregistered Airbnbs in your municipality. But unless you're like Nashville and this is a problem where hundreds of these are operating in the city, it's probably not really affordable to, to engage with a contractor on something like that.
Well, I mean, for some of these, we can, we can blatantly see where they are.
Absolutely. And, and I think word of mouth is a good, you know, way to keep up with this. If you see one, if you hear about somebody, you know, renting something right downtown.
Right.
Just check.
I, in that matter or that specific situation, and I'm not sure if, if the person who owns those properties has a permit or not, I mean, is that what we're talking about here going and saying, hey, you need to be permitted?
Yeah, reach out to staff and say, you know, I, I'm wondering about this and we can check our records and, and see. And if it doesn't line up, then we'll, we'll be happy to do that outreach to them.
Yeah. I think that is something we should be doing. Especially because it, it seems to, you know, it's kind of like you get away with one thing on one end. Well, you might be trying to get away with something else on another end and, you know, these little things add up. And, uh, you know, i- if, if you want to do business in the town of Scottsville, um, you should be a good community member, uh, is kind of my thought.
Well, and it is also a business license issue. That's the other aspect of it. And, and that's where we were able to engage with people when we first passed the ordinance and there was a, an issue of existing uses being grandfathered in. We could still encourage people to come to us, you know, for the business license. And, and that's another way then for us to keep track of the use, even if it's grandfathered and, and doesn't need the special use permit.
Right.
Are there any more questions or comments regarding the transient lodging? I'll take that as a no. Uh, so with that being said, we are now at the end of our meeting. Oh, actually, no, pause. Lindsay, do you happen to remember your, uh, report of relevant actions? You got anything for us?
Well, so, so much has happened on this call between the beginning and the end.
Lizzy, I've got, I've got my minutes here. I've got my notes from the last regular session, if you want me to just take a stab at it.
Um, yeah, and you, you might need to back me up here, but yes, I can say that uh, on our last conversations, we did pass the motions on the special use permits for 430 Valley Street and 691 Harrison Street. I think that's it though. That was kind of all that I have to report back. Um, but you know, that does bring up one other thing I wanted to mention is that I heard for 430 Valley Street, which is the, um, old own tattoo space that we did the special use permit for residential conversion for the, the work home space that that tenant has fallen through. Um, so now that space is just being rented as a residential rental. Um, so that said, since we did approve the commercial use aspect or the live work aspect, uh, provided someone else new comes in and wants to run a business out of there, I assume they're fine to do so.
Yeah. So it's good for them to know if they have an option.
Right.
And if we, um, I think then one of the next things on your workflow is going to be looking at those revisions for the downtown zoning. So it might be that you all make changes to that that renders a lot of these special use permits that we've been doing redundant. So. Um, and just a quick correction, you did vote to pass the Harrison Street, uh, special use permit. There was a vote to call the public hearing on the 501 Valley Street. Public hearing will be at this month's meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And now with no other things that are pushed down the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You got a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And with no one opposed, uh, thank you for a nice meeting. Meeting adjourned. Please be safe and we will see you May 3rd. Uh, and then we'll be holding another public hearing that day.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you all.